Sixteen, and what we're proposing to do is to reduce that to four. Now, there's some confusion out there. People are saying that's not a tax cut. But if you use the rate now, to me, that's a tax cut, and that's what will be on the ballot. So capital mileage, we can't use that for operating purposes. We can only use that for buildings, maintenance. I will tell you, we've got some fifty and sixty year old buildings, as you know. We have an issue with the Mendel Center that is going to take billions of dollars to fix. We think that is still a building that needs to be in the community. Maybe people aren't coming to shows like they used to, but it's a building with a lot of community to use. It's a beautiful theater. We use it for lots of time. We use it for lots of important things. So here's the why. Today, we announced, actually, you guys are the first ones to hear, Smart Asset, a company in New York, it's a financial services firm. They look at five hundred community colleges that have five hundred or more students. We were the number one community college in Michigan, and we were number thirteen in the country, which I told the president, that doesn't make the college football playoff. You gotta be in the top twelve. We gotta do a little bit better. But we're number one in Michigan for the second year in a row. And here's what they judge you on. They judge you on retention of your students. We are up over eighty-five percent on retention of students. They judge you on affordability. We've always been very affordable. We've already talked about that. And they judge us on faculty-student ratio. We're at thirteen students per one faculty member in Lake Michigan College. I remember going to Western Michigan University, sitting in that. Actually, I've got a better story for you. A visitor buddy of mine at Michigan State, I took a psychology test at Michigan State, but I wasn't enrolled because there were four hundred people in the lecture hall, and nobody knew who was there. And I did get eight out of ten. So I got beat at Michigan State in my one test. I want to talk a little bit about some innovations, and here's where I mentioned Commissioner Henderson's refunding way in. I would like to see more Ben Harbor students in dual-enrollment classes in early middle college. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you know the advantage of that. I think your family is taking advantage of that. You can save literally thousands of dollars per family. Students getting their associate's degree in one year, taking that thirteen year. And that really does set people up for career and college success. We've added a bunch of new stuff lately, too, because what we found out is some people don't even want to go to school for two years. So I was walking with a young man from the parking lot, and I asked him, and I always ask students, how you doing? How you doing? How's class? And he said, well, not so good. I go, what happened? He says, my brother died of opioids two days ago. And I said, you're coming to school? You're coming to class today? Well, he's in a welding class. And he looked at me and he said, I've never gotten an A in any class in all my life until I took a welding in LMC. And I know by taking welding at LMC, I'm going to land the bridge out. So I thought I needed to be here. So we don't talk about the quality that's offered out there in Lake Michigan. The other thing that we're really pushing now is apprenticeships, especially youth apprenticeships, trying to get kids involved in eleventh and twelfth grade into Department of Labor apprenticeships and actual jobs. So this is the first countywide youth apprenticeship program in Michigan. We started here, and it really actually to try to build our workforce, going back to that original point that I was making. Thing I want to mention is we've always been very fiscally responsible. We've got the highest credit rating from standard of course of any community college in Michigan. We're tied to the Grand Records Community College. We're double A plus. We are looking to reduce that capital mileage by fifty percent and freeze the operational mileage through 2046. So there's no increase. Like a down, the headly amendment kicks in, but it can't. So that's what's on the ballot. So thank you, guys, for the opportunity to just kind of explain where we're at, what we're doing. We've got a lot of exciting developments going on. We've got three new, brand new turf fields out there, so if you can find a place and home games. Mr. Mayor, I gotta get that gym fixed, though. We gotta fix that gym somehow and make it into a field house or a center. So, but thank you so much. Any questions?
Chair recognizes Commissioner Sandusky.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor.
Good presentation.
Oh, I forgot to mention, Chief, we have the police academy.
Just get rid of it.
Thanks for saying that.
Because it's real, make it a lot better cost-wise, too, for us to be able to send the people to the academy locally. And so I'm glad to see that come back.
Well, that really started when we heard from the chiefs of police and the sheriff, who said, we're gonna have one hundred and thirty-five officers retire over the next five years. We need a local place to train. So within ten months, LMC stood up a police academy, got all the approvals, got staff, got the team in place. And we graduated twenty-seven officers in the last two summers.
Chair recognizes Mayor Phil Timm's seats.
The shot clock's about to wind down. I do appreciate the presentation. We know better when we, we do better when we know better, let me say that. And for you to be here, and also say you're cutting village rates, that's phenomenal for the taxpayers. We need to really look into that because that means that your tax bill will go down instead of going up. And not only that, but the quality of education, certifications. There's many people in this community that give money for the things that you're doing or not doing. And to see that you're doing it, the graduation rate and everything else that is happening is monumental. Because to say that seventy percent, I think it was, Ben Harbor students.
No, countywide.
Countywide, so seventy percent of the utilized these programs, any welding, all the other things that you're doing, is phenomenal. And I want to make sure that the city don't take this for granted. Because you don't, we don't know what's gonna happen in these next few years with budget constraints and money leaving and all these other things, and somebody to say they're willing to cut a rate. And then, you know, to say that you have the wine classes. There's a lot of people that probably want to make sure they get into it. But I do appreciate this presentation. I thank you for coming. And I think that it's a move in the right direction. When you see all this dirt moving in Ben Harbor and to see you guys booming and thriving to assist us with what we're trying to do. Because Ben Harbor does, and he will, these buildings, we need people to work. And thank you for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just want to say thank you for the presentation. Mr. President, thank you for coming. I'm sure your breakneck schedule to come out at seven o'clock on Monday after eight hour or nine or ten hour, thank you, appreciate that, and the staff as well.
Our pleasure.
The, I just wanted to say a few things as far as, they say that you think education is expensive. Try it. Try it. One inmate for a level one incarceration is thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars per year. A level two is forty-five thousand and twenty-six dollars per year. A level four is fifty-four, one year, is fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars per year. And if it's a reception center, it can get to sixty-two thousand and some change. So what I do know, that when people receive quality education, that's one of the greatest defenses against crime and violence in our society. Education is the passport to the future. So you're gonna pay either way, one way or the other. Let's choose to invest, well, I'm just talking about myself, okay? You know, I think it's wise for us to choose and invest in a positive way to help people before they get to this stage. And from a personal standpoint, I have a daughter who ended up graduating from the department university. She was in a five-year program, started Ben Harbor High School, Lake Michigan College. And another daughter, who was a valedictorian at Ben Harbor High School, went off to Tennessee State, came home, and LMC was the parachute that helped her to have a safe landing. Now she's back at Xavier University, and she's studying to be a doctor. And then my son, who was at Albean, didn't quite work out. But there was a parachute for a safe landing, so he can still get a quality education and try and make a life for himself. So I know personally, I don't need to be preached to or convicted. Lake Michigan College is the best thing going in our community. And I want to see it not only for another eighty years, but I think the next two hundred years, this area will be transformed, and it will come from Lake Michigan College. So thank you.
And your mouth is horrible, Mayor.
Want to move to the next item on our agenda. We have the Rustus County Commissioner representing us in the county. None other than Commissioner, Honorable Commissioner Mamie L. Yarab. You are recognized.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Mohammed, honorable, Mayor Pro Tem Seeds, and honorable commissioners. And I also took say to our citizens and visitors that are here, I thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm not good at years. I like to say I've been doing this since whatever, but I have been doing it. And what I want to do and what I try to do is bring information to our community. There are so many things going on. A lot of them you see, a lot of them you not see. And this is why I try to bring to you the numbers and the what's coming up, what's available, and encourage all of our residents to go, go to meetings, go to things you read about or you wonder about. Because the United States of America says everything is open. It's open meetings. And so I would like to let you know, and I enjoy talking about this tax foreclosure sales, or that you could buy a property next door to you for fifty dollars, or one of those things that are happening. We need to start saving up and being ready and trusting somebody, our family or whatever, because we've thought it, I've thought it for years, there will be nothing left. And it's our fault because we're here, and you can read the paper, and I come to tell you. I'd like to tell you about our tax sale that just was completed. As you know, we're now done with the company, and there are eighty-three counties in Michigan. And these companies have the majority of all the paperwork and everything that we used to do. But the properties are marked. You've been riding around, you'll see some kind of neon sign or whatever that will let you know that it isn't a tax sale, plus it's listed and it's public information. The final sale day was August twenty-seventh, and the results for the Marion County tax foreclosure, we had one hundred and seven properties in the sale. Before that, the properties are listed, and communities in the county have the opportunity to purchase the property because they can say, we mean to do this with it, or it's contiguous to that. And they must pay for it before the tax sale, otherwise it goes into the tax sale. So we ended up with one hundred and seven properties for sale, eight, five were sold. The total was four million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, forty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. That is the amount that those properties were sold for. That may not have been the total value, but because of some stuff that happened and whatever, there is, there became a major suit where, and I don't know if this is in other states, but in Michigan, when we have a tax sale and the property is sold for more than is owed to the county or other entities, because on that tax bill, there are all kinds of things that can be added. When it's more collected than was due, the owner, the former owner can go back, and I don't know that it's good for it, but anyway, they want. And we have to spend back the difference between those taxes. Whereas when we used to get the money in Marion County, our treasurer used much of it for demolition, for doing things to repair and to bring things back. But this money goes directly to the people. I'd like to let you know there are twenty-two properties left, and that sale will be on October thirty-first. Again, it will be over the computer. So before long, you're going to be able, I think at least thirty days before this actual sale is over, you're going to be able to look on the computer under Marion County Treasurer, look for tax sale or land sale, and you will see what's listed. I believe our treasurer White told us that these are vacant properties. They're not houses or any of those kinds of things. And again, I say to you, it's Marion County, not just Ben Harbor. There are properties all over. And so you can look, get the address from the computer, and you can go and look. You can't go in it. You can't, if it's occupied, you can't borrow, I'm sorry, you can't bother the people. But as I said, we, I believe that the, these are vacant properties. There are no houses on them. I'd like to let you know also that Treasurer White will be in Dallas Township this month, September. And what she'll probably do, the way she did before the last sale, is be in different communities so that she can come and ask questions, give a payment plan, or do whatever. Because Marion County does not want to take this property. We want it to be lived in, used, manufactured in, or whatever should happen. So you can look out for that, and I'll continue to let you know when there is a schedule of when she's in other places. Or you can always call Marion County Treasurer's office, should you want to know more information. It's very interesting to me. I am on Marion County Michigan Works. I'm on the Naxos Board, and I've been since I was first elected. So it's been nine years that I've been on, and I know a lot is going on. But to listen to Lake Michigan College talk a lot of apprenticeships, all kinds of things that are going on. I was just in a meeting last Wednesday, and that is what Michigan Works is talking about. They have apprenticeships. And what they do is they would work with a nonprofit company, they would work with a profit, for-profit company, and help them set up apprenticeships. And what they do is on, I saw this, I don't know if it means every one of them, pays seventy-five percent of the apprenticeship funds payment that you give. So think about what I've told you. It's just a little box, a little schedule, but somewhere, there's money everywhere or whatever, and people are working to create apprenticeships with nonprofit, with for-profit, with factories, with whatever. And so what I suggest you do is that you get in touch with Michigan Works and ask what that is and how it works. I'd like to let you know that Marion County meets every Thursday morning at eight thirty-five a.m. We then at nine, from eight thirty-five to nine fifteen, that's called Committee of the Whole. And then we go into committee meetings, and that's at nine fifteen, and they're open. And that is where we discuss what we're doing, what we're paying, what we can, what we can't. And then our regular Marion County meeting is at ten thirty a.m. I also ask you to look into jobs. Sometimes our job list looks like a book. So please, you're looking for a job, we're looking for you. And look at those things and see. We also have committees, just like you do, planning committee, this kind of committee. Oh, we have a new book out. This is the Marion County Directory, and this is for twenty-five through twenty-six. It's a two-year, we put them out every two years. And so I've bought some, and I think I've given quite a few away already. I would like to leave over to the clerk if that's all right, Mayor Mohammed, with her. And I'll bring more. And note that you can go to the county attorney's office and get this book. And I like to tell people that if you want to get in touch with our president, he's in here. If you want to get in touch with Mamie Yarab, towards the back, I'll be back. I'm in here. And so I thank you again for this opportunity to address you. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is public participation, citizens' comments. Three-minute maximum per speaker. We've signed with the signing of the city clerk, who will call you based on the registration.
There are no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to our consent calendar items. Motion to approve. Motion to recognize Commissioner Clark Griffin. You recommend. Do you leave now? Make a motion to approve. Commissioner Henderson, you recommend. Do you leave now? Make a motion to approve. Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Seeds. Support. Approve of the consent calendar. It's supported by Commissioner Singleton, Mayor.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seats?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Mayor Mohammed?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This brings us to the separated items from the agenda. Number two, appointment to the cemetery board, Jerry Edwards. Is there most of approval? Make a motion to approve. Motion is made by Mayor Protem Seats.
For.
And this is supported by Commissioner Singleton. Discussion. Chair recognizes Commissioner Clark Griffin.
So. Mr. Edwards has been on these four committees since, that I know of, since I've been in office almost four years. One was Public Safety and he lost the election twenty-two and three, so he couldn't be co-chair anymore on that. Uh, the other one was Brownfield and because his strain, poor attendance, he lost that. And this is not just this year, that was last year. Uh, economic, he's on now, economic development and parties on now. Um, between January and July, he's missed three, he's, he's only been present. He's missed three executives in, in a row. Only been present, the last time he was present was since, was in February. And according to the rules, when you miss three executives in a row or four out of twelve months, you're not even supposed to be on the board anymore. Uh, the last one is DDA and he has been present one time since January. Between January and August, the last time present was January. So I want to know what makes him a good candidate, citizen rep or board member for the cemetery with his excessive absentee. Right.
Chair recognizes First Ward, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Um, this appointment can come through the legislative committee and, um, Mr. Edwards has had several deaths in his family and serious illnesses that has prevented him at different times, specifically this year. Um, he lost his daughter, he lost his father, somebody else this year. So it's been a very tumultuous, uh, year and so that's why he has been absent. But when he was able to serve, he did a great job. And so, um, he was a great advocate as a voice for our community and I think he still deserves an opportunity because people do struggle and go through things. And I think it's just a matter of asking, we have compassion about, uh, those kinds of things. And I think he deserves an opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mayor Protem Seats.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I, um, I support, uh, Commissioner Edwards, uh, being on the cemetery board. Cemetery board needs some kind of people who know what's going on, who knows what's at play here, who knows how to, um, get things done, know truthfully, probably through the quarter or things that's going on at cemetery board forward. Um, it needs, people are not beating down the door to be on any of these committees. Uh, but for him to make the step forward to, um, to step forward and say, I want to help the city. Cemetery board is not a paid position. It's a voluntary position. And I don't want to make any kind of personal attacks or accusations because if we did that, then there's many people who should not be serving on these boards. And if we, um, did like classroom and took attendance, a lot of people were supposed to be on these boards, probably wouldn't have anybody serving on any board. Um, but I do think Commissioner Edwards, his party's in the right place with the presence of City of Benton Harbor came all the way back to the city of Chicago to help out. He's been a volunteer, a basketball coach, he's been a volunteer in many areas, summer youth employment and a whole lot of other things that Mr. Edwards has done. So I don't want, and I, my heart goes out to him, he lost his family, he lost his daughter, he lost his granddaughter, he lost his mother, he lost a whole lot of other relatives. So we never know how people deal with certain situations. But Commissioner Edwards, because he's always been commissioner if he was elected, uh, my heart goes out to you for the city of Benton Harbor. And we hope none of these comments have personally affected you or, uh, slandered you in the outway. I support you.
One or more of course.
Do want to recognize, uh, Commissioner Singleton?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I pretty much occurred with, uh, Mayor Protem. I do, uh, have seen, uh, Commissioner Edwards, uh, work and also, uh, was, well, talking with him during his time of, uh, of agreement with, uh, several, uh, family members. His son, Michael, uh, lost, uh, and his, uh, his daughter was a Jewish, um, granddaughter. And it was, uh, tough time for him. But, uh, when he was able to, uh, uh, help out, he, uh, he still did it. And I'm, uh, glad that he's, you know, still willing to serve. Cemetery board definitely has, you know, had some, uh, issues with it. A lot of times they couldn't even, um, have a meeting because they didn't have a board. And, uh, no one intended, but in a seat where they're down, you just, you know, get on that board. So when you've got somebody who's willing to serve and, uh, I think, you know, his colleagues there before, cemetery definitely has, uh, a lot of issues, you know. And this, I believe in, uh, being rebound and trying to, uh, straighten out all that stuff. I just, you know, I think you need somebody who's willing to serve and also has, um, has knowledge of, uh, what's been going on. I do, uh, support Commissioner Edwards for a lot of things.
Yes, I just want to echo and also extend condolences. We have spoken privately and people, those loved ones, especially immediate. This is when you usually see people resign or walk away. But when you, when I saw your name come across as somebody who wants to continue to volunteer and serve, regardless to circumstances, um, you're that concerned because, you know, these positions and the commitment, uh, it's a lot, even volunteering. But I do know, um, that your record, going back to the nonprofit work that you've done, uh, there's a photo in the mayor's office right now, Deputy Dick Miller, uh, that we took years ago. You know, trying to, you know, lunches and provide an opportunity. And this was some of the roughest young people that some don't even want to work with for president. Uh, so not to mention you were my eighth gr- my daughter's eighth grade basketball. Just totally about, uh, so my support for you is not because of that alone. Uh, but, you know, your, your hi- your history is, is no mystery. Uh, you are a worker, uh, and you're honorable. Uh, and I support this resolution. Call for the question.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seats?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
No.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry? Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Mayor Mohammed?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This brings us to the next separated item, three, resolution authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute installation of sign for Manny El Yarborough Public Library cost to exceed fifteen thousand. Is there most of approval? Make a motion to approve. Motion is made by Mayor Protem Seats. They're supported.
Supported.
This is supported by Commissioner Isom. If they're discussing, chair recognizes.
Thank you, Mayor. This was, um, a committee committee. We had some discussion on it. There was some questions and my main question, I did not get answered as to where was the money coming from? Was our budget the way it's set up now? That, and I did not get an answer. And before I vote, I need to know where that money is coming from and, uh, fifteen thousand dollars, up to fifteen thousand dollars. So I need to know, please, for transparency measures, I need to know where that money's coming from. Because Manny El Yarborough is one of my favorite persons. He's been here since I've been here and I don't want to vote against it because of non-transparency. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mayor Protem Seats.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I don't believe it's coming out of the general fund, but there's extra money that's been added to the general fund. Again, Commissioner Yarborough, all your years of service, what you mean in the city of Benton Harbor. Uh, we just, we have to, uh, do something for you. And to say anything about this is not. We will, uh, make sure this is satisfied with this monument, however they do it. They do it for everybody else and it's not something that is going to be hurting the general fund. And through the chair, is this going to hurt the general fund in any type of way? Are we doing something where we're taking from anywhere? You know, the, the, the real thing is that we, they lose transparency so loosely that people are really not really, they're transparent in what they want to be transparent about. But then they're really not transparent about what they don't want to be transparent about. And so I want to make sure that we're not doing anything illegal. There is money that is available for the library to, um, do this. And there's extra money that we do have in the general fund. Through the chair, can you please have the city manager speak to this? So I don't want to be on Facebook that we're spending money to give you any kind of monument or anything. I do appreciate the ability to celebrate your way of life. You don't have to die for us to give you your flowers while you're here. The thank you, um, I would just say that the city hall building was named, uh, the Will C. L. Cook Municipal Building. Uh, we purchased a sign. Uh, you can see the mounted, uh, photos, um, of him with President Ray in jail Ford and, uh, President George Herbert Walker Bush, because of him in the, um, White House, East Wing, West Wing, uh, which is our history, Ben-Hurra history. So it's not personal. It's, you know, the legacy of the city, uh, and the Benton Harbor Public Library is no different. Uh, that's a public building that is owned by the city of Benton Harbor. Uh, it was named after Manny El Yarborough for her sacrifice, uh, and work in this community. Uh, not only as the, uh, president of Benton Harbor Schools, over twenty-plus years as Bering County Commission. I don't know exactly how many years for the Benton Harbor Public Library as a president, but let's say a life of, of, of service. Um, so then we will have some amendments coming up, uh, regarding our general fund budget, which the city manager will provide, um, on our quarterly schedule. Fund this particular, uh, naming of the Benton Harbor Public Library, but I will yield to the city manager of a couple.
Thank you, sir. Uh, suffice it to say that we passed a budget fifty, July one. And, uh, since that time, I have identified and brought into the city's general fund well over a hundred thousand dollars that, uh, will fund the, uh, project here to, uh, Manny El Yarborough Public Library on the library, as well as, uh, pay the costs for the cleanup that we've been doing at Public Works.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henry.
All right, I accept that. Uh, I also hear the financial director, every month, every two weeks, he said the same thing, that the general fund was lacking money. I think that we should do exactly what we need to do for Manny El Yarborough. But I also think that we should be fair steward of the money and make sure that every dime is spent and we get the best bang for our dollars right now. Now you, I, this is the first time since June, I've heard anyone say that we're going to amend the budget. It didn't happen last year and it didn't happen year before last. So here we go. Can anybody tell me, since Mary, you brought it up, what date are we going to amend the budget in two thousand twenty-five?
Working, uh, with our chair of the personnel finance committee, uh, Commissioner Edward Isom. Uh, they will be releasing that information, I can guarantee you. But it, sooner than later. So it will be coming up, um, for our quarterly. We are September, so we'll be looking at this for October.
Yes, good information. There is such a thing as transparency when you dig it out and make you guys tear. So I thank you, Mayor, for even getting to that point, because it's been a long time.
We've had a number of, uh, and this, like I say, the manager will, uh, disclose this information. We've had a number of, uh, different adjustments, I would say, uh, positive. And, uh, through the personnel finance committee, uh, you will learn all about it. But the city of Benton Harbor, as you know, uh, has always had challenges financially. We climbed out of emergency management in twenty seventeen after seven years. So we're seven years removed, uh, from public act four-three-six, uh, under Home Rule Act. So, uh, this, this, this takes some time, as you know, as our senior, uh, and dean of the city council, uh, to claw our way out of where we were. But I think we're in much better place today.
I just can't wait until October. Thank you.
Over, of course. Mayor Protem Seats?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Mohammed?
Yes.
Motion carried.
This brings us to staff comments. And I would like to, uh, it is permissible by the council, uh, that we give our commission comments, uh, prior to our closed session. If, if there's no objections.
No objections. Want to recognize our, uh, deputy director of public safety, ours fireside, Deputy Casimir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I just wanted to take the time to thank the commission for your support tonight of the, uh, regional fire training center and what we're doing to move forward in that project. Um, in the past four years, we've trained over twenty-five hundred firefighters in Benton Harbor. It's something we were told that would never happen and could never be done. Um, and we've proven the naysayers wrong. And, uh, as we say on the public safety side, we are Benton Harbor and we're going to make this a, a huge success. So thank you guys for your support.
Thank you. Chair recognizes city attorney, Senator.
I don't have a report tonight, Honorable Mayor.
Chair recognizes our assistant city manager and city clerk, Moore.
Thank you. Um, absentee ballots for the November election should be coming out in the next couple of weeks. We have not received them yet, but as soon as we get them, they will be mailed out. Um, they can be picked up in the office September twenty-sixth. By law, we have to have them ready September twenty-sixth to be picked up in the office.
Thank you. Chair recognizes city manager.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to say that I kind of keep up with the comments and complaints and so forth that come in from people as, uh, as we work and trying to get the job done that we're doing. And I'm very cognizant of the fact that the city has come a very, very long way from where it has been. Despite at this time period anyway, people's complaints about all kinds of things, such as the alleys and whatnot. I think many people fail to remember or realize that maintenance of property from the back of the curb at the street to the middle of the alley behind the house is a responsibility of the property owner. The city has been doing and continues to try to do all that it can. But when we talk about financial burdens on the city, that has been part of, that the city has tried to be everything to everybody. And it can't do that. It can't afford to do that. Many of the things that we're doing right now, that are getting the country started, things that have been mounting for years, it didn't start yesterday. We just, the last two weeks, cleaned up a pile of refuse and stuff that's been stored behind public works going back to when the emergency managers were here. Because when they cleaned out, they didn't, they didn't have trucks to haul it directly to the dump. Couldn't put it in the garbage truck, so that's where it was stored, but it never got cleaned up. We, uh, brought our attention here recently and we're just about trying to get it, uh, cleaned up. That's part of what was done with some of the extra money that was brought in that will be reflected in the budget amendment. But there are a lot of other things like that that are also being addressed that have been just sitting there for the longest time. And it's time now to try and clean it up. So we're continuing to do what we can. But at the same time, I think many of the people who are complaining should recognize that they don't necessarily have a proper understanding of whose responsibility some of these things are. The trees and the tree lawns and the trash in the alley and the weeds in the alley that people turn them through. Years ago, we used to pick up trash twice a week and we did it in the alleys. Everybody maintained and cleaned the alleys. There was a requirement that if you had a fence, it had to be a door so you could get access to the alley to keep it clean and that type of thing. We're trying to do all we can to improve the city, but we're going to also ask people to step up.
Like to thank all staff, uh, for your comments and reports. I'd like to recognize Commissioner Clark.
So I, I thought we were waiting to have to close that, but you want me to come in now?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight, everybody that's listening. And, um, let me just clarify what slander is. Slander is when you're making a false statement that, uh, deframing somebody's character. Whatever I do, I do research, I have receipts, nothing false. What I said tonight is fact. On August the fifth, election day, I was verbally assaulted by one of my colleagues. Then he proceeded to go to, uh, verbally assault one of the other candidate at another location while his, one of his other relatives came and assaulted me, verbally assaulted me again. Camp, some of my campaign posters have been torn down. Mr. Shakil Turner, one of his posters is torn down. A couple of, um, campaign signs, posts have been broken. That was, there's been Facebook posts and videos talking about me and Ms. De Field and Shakil Turner. False or not, they're not saying my name, our name, but we know they're talking about us because of what they're saying. Um, by one of the ex-formal colleagues who's running for, uh, election, read, will not read because she's not a mission anymore. But running for election, there's been a fake page that's been set up. I believe it's Cassandra Green where they're talking about me, Mr. D., um, Ms. Mr. Fields, Ms. Fields and Mr. Shakil Turner, deframing our slander and deframing our character, slamming our name, deframing our characters, spreading false lies. Uh, one of the candidates had, at the election on August the fifth, had a bullhorn, which is a violation of the, uh, election law rules. Um, there's been some legal literature and campaign signs that's been put up and going around by some of the ones running for election. So I just wanted you guys, I was going to stay quiet, but since I'm going to accuse other things, I'm going to let go of what's been happening. It's been a lot of old stuff happening, you know, it's getting crazy and I, I just cannot believe it. And, and I, I'm running on the post. So I, I wouldn't even, I'm going to let y'all feel, but because I was supporting certain people, I was verbally attacked, you know. So just wanted you guys to know what's all going on. Have a good night.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. I always have a problem when I have to go to ask Commissioner, uh, Clark Griffin. She's always got some valid information to share or she's always got this project that she's done or doing. That is not the case for me. But I do hear my colleagues using the word slander and defraing. I can guarantee you that if I make a statement, it's because I have the fact to back it up. I'm not framing anybody, talking about anybody, but if the shoe fix you and I'm saying that this is happening, you don't like it, it's because the shoe is really tight on you. And I'm going to do this every chance I get from the rest of my life that I'm sitting here. I'm starting to call out names and I'm going to tell what you did. And believe me, I have done history of what you did. So if you say that I'm doing slander, if you want, check my. So if you say that I'm doing slander, if you won't check my facts, check that I say is true. And do not ever say that I'm slandering anybody without proof I'm doing that. So I'm just letting you know, everyone, that it is on now. They have said things about me in sly way, and I don't like it. It's called political slimery, and I don't like it. And I'm putting a fight back with it. Get ready. If your sheet is dirty, get ready because I'm pulling that sheet out and showing it to the world.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Thanks to everyone who came out. For those who are watching, I don't have anything but positive information to share. My committee yard sale will be, sorry, October 4th. Sorry, I'm getting so upset. So we would love to have everyone come on down. The slots are $10. And if you have food, truck, and courts, you have to have a license. That would be $25. And we use that money for our town hall, to get food, to have food down town hall, and also clean up the lot. So come on down, we'd love to have you. I will probably schedule another second or three. I will get that date, and it will be before the weather, before the snow gets around. And that is all I have. You guys have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Ensign.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight. I want to make comments, but just wanted to briefly talk about some of the things that we approved tonight, which Cass addressed briefly about the simulation that'll be built that'll help firemen and continue the training of fires in Benton Harbor. That's powerful. Like you said, we have a top-notch facility where people come, 2,500 firemen have come here to be trained, and that is a real big deal. Also, we approved tonight, you guys, that actually we revitalization plan, which is huge. And so just thanks to Marcy and all of the team that worked on this. It was just a huge thing to approve of that. And I'd like to also thank our guests tonight who came out. Commissioner Yarborough, as always, your presentations are great. And Lake Michigan College, you guys did a great job with the presentation. And I graduated from Lake Michigan College, then went on to California, another degree. So it has been a great place for our community. The work has been done down there. So who knows who you are. I just love to see the growth that has happened, is happening. Hopefully, as Ms. Pacheco talked about, the partnership with the high school will continue for a week in January so that we can have more young people completing those five years. Thank you, this is great work, love to see. And I would also argue that sometimes because our community needs to start younger to open up the eyes of youth to see what it is that they can do or become if they don't already see it. So thank you all.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Lars Ensign.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, the folks who presented. Stan, Cass Merrick, did a good job with the fire department as usual. That department has come a long way. You know, we have opportunity to, you know, get firefighters trained, go down the street sometime and see them out there. It's good to see people still want to do that. Now with the Lake Michigan College, firefighters, you got police training, so getting right here in the Bay Harbor area. Mr. Pacheco, your team, good job. And it was good to hear the history of Lake Michigan College. I started remembering when I was a kid, and the toll meter was on Brandon Avenue where I think Lake Michigan College is at now. Some of the buildings down the hill, we used to take out the wagons and bikes and ride down the hill, then see, this is Lake Michigan College. And then to see it developed out on Napier to the fire facilities there. And just go out there and try to fish a little bit too. But good job, and I think those are the things that's happening in our area that's going to be good for our community. It's political season, I can see, you know, things get a little hot, but, you know, hopefully we can get through that. Mr. Edwards, glad to see you back. Mr. Edwards was co-chair, public safety, we're here, and did an excellent job. He took care of parks part and did the public safety department. He definitely handled his business and showed a lot of compassion towards his work. Welcome back. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Lars Ensign.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Great presentation by LMC. You know, I remember when I was in skilled trades. Mr. Flowers was the welding teacher of things at the time. I know he directed over, jerked over, directed over. Yep. And I remember he was a welder, the teacher. And I remember going to class and it passed to wings. So LMC have been good to me, you know, I got my skilled trade technology, four-year degree in applied science, major in skilled trade. So it's worth, it's worth it. And thank you for coming tonight, giving the history about that. And getting more Benton Harbor students involved in that. It's money to be made and get your skill, to take care of your family, and take care of yourself, you know. When I was going to class then, I was a little older, but just to fit in, you know. On day one, you see everybody. As the days get, going to classes, where everybody at? You know. It's easy to start, but the finish is just the way to go, you know. So thank you for that presentation. Commissioner Yarborough, thank you for your update. And when I told you at one of our meetings, I said I was going to build a relationship with the city of Benton Harbor and the public library. Because the library is an entity of the city of Benton Harbor. And so now it passes tonight that we pass, put your name up. You said, Yarborough, Yarborough, is it Yarborough or one Yarborough, right? I think she had two Yarboroughs in there one time, but to get that passed, that's phenomenal, you know, that finally got this relationship built. Want to thank the city manager too, and just the commission. I'd like to thank Commissioner Edwards, congratulations on your appointment. He's always volunteering. He's been on all kinds of boards, he shows up. I know he's going through a lot, but he's a good person to have on the committee. He shows up and voices opinion, and he's a people person, and he likes to be involved. And plus, I don't know if it's true. I know lions beat the bears, I know he's from Chicago. I don't know, you said you want to be a lion's fan now, right?
Chambers. Chambers will be in order.
We'll work on that, we'll work on that. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. Benton Harbor got a lot going on, like everybody, a lot of things happening in the city of Benton Harbor, and just stay involved. And like I always say, expect great things, this is happening here. Expect great things to happen. Wait till these roads get finished, ooh. Benton Harbor, all roads lead to Benton Harbor, God bless you.
But thank you, Commissioner Ensign. I'd like to recognize Mayor Protem Seitz.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Chair, for chairing this meeting and to everybody who's coming out tonight. Not only the outstanding presentations that make a difference in the city of Benton Harbor. I want to thank our commission for voting yes on Emma Cole's park that's going on, Project Team that's going on, that's over $10 million project. For voting yes could get $18 million for Harvard Towers, $22 million for bus projects, over $50 million going on down here at Wall Street. And also, the project is about their breaking ground, they're just moving in the city of Benton Harbor. So thank everybody for voting yes for that and for the benefit of your city and your city residents. Because this is not for outsiders, this is for the residents of Benton Harbor. Nobody is doing this for anybody to come move in and take over. There's more people pay water bills, there's more people that do great things in Benton Harbor. There's more people to come to Benton Harbor. So when you see this establishment coming down the street, it's looking more like Grand Rapids downtown that's going to be right down here at the corner. And that's for people with our income in this community, I won't say what kind of income it is. But I want to thank you for voting yes on that. And they're coming through, planning economic development committee. I want to thank Commissioner Warren for all you do for not accepting donations to do what you do, but you do, I'm talking about financial donations to do what you do, but you're doing it for the residents of Benton Harbor. You're taking care of people in your ward, and you're doing a great thing there. I want to thank everybody for coming out. Commissioner Edwards, keep on doing a great job. People don't have to do anything nice with Benton Harbor. But I tell you one thing, if you get rid of all the good people, then you don't have anybody to take their place, so what happens? We've seen it happen on every board that we've had in this community, where people have been replaced by our friends and our families, and some things have died in on hospice, or now they're dying on the deathbed. And it's because of personal relationships, not really because people know what they're doing. So I can get a whole lot of people to go on the school quarter, get people to go on the library board, I can get people to go on every board, but are they really for the really heartbeat of Benton Harbor? Are they doing what's best for Benton Harbor? When you vote for yes for $22 million for $18 million, I'm sorry, for Harvard Towers, those people are excited right now, they're going to have a better living condition, have a better living quarter. Thank you, I seen a hand raising in the back right there. They're going to have a better living condition. So the heartbeat of our community is to move forward. Thank you, Casemay, for what you're doing for all those firefighters who have been coming through Benton Harbor. We see all kinds of firefighters coming from everywhere around, surrounding areas. This is beneficial, and this is beautiful for the heartbeat of Benton Harbor. Benton Harbor is moving forward whether we like it or not. Benton Harbor is doing great things whether we like it or not. We're praying for our football team, and I think Coach is out there trying to coach right now. But we're going to do great things for the city of Benton Harbor and to Commissioner Isom. We also thank them for being the Detroit Lions family. They beat the deaf last week, and they did win this week. But let's keep them going, and hopefully we can do something for the people who are sincerely homeless downtown.
Yes, yes.
Something needs to happen that we can help them to find a better place to go. Because I know Commissioner Ensign worked hard to get Marlon King down there, and I don't think Marlon King would leave Atlanta, that's any people sleeping around. When he got down there, so we need to make sure that we get them somewhere to go that is safe, that is warm, and that they can have a place to lay their heads. It's not just happening in Benton Harbor, it's happening everywhere. The homeless population is picking up. So let's pray for them, let's try to do something that will help them get out of there. It's all moving forward in Harbor. Keep your head up, and whenever you hear eat a meat, expect a bone.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Seitz. As the clock started. So I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out. I'd like to thank those who were awarded appointments tonight. Thank Lake Michigan College for your presentation. And I want to be on record saying that I am willing to debate anytime, anyplace, anywhere on the question of does Lake Michigan College have benefited to Southwest Michigan? So I know you'll fight from all hours, just let me know where it's holding down at, right?
They don't have the guts, Mr. Mayor.
I want to thank Commissioner Yarborough for his assistance. And I know that my daughter interviewed you. That's when I learned that you went through Benton Harbor area schools, kindergarten through 12th grade. So you are truly a model. I have six girls. You're one of the first women to serve on the county board. So when our young women look for possibility, there's no position that's high enough for them to rise. And they can look on television and see others, but they can reach out and touch you. So thank you for your leadership. Tomorrow, we'll be traveling to Lansing, invitation to be a listener to Governor Gretchen Whitmer's speech, protect and defend Michigan's economy. Over the past few weeks, I have met with different state legislators, met with the city minority leader in District 20, Senator Eric Nesbit, met with State Representative Joey Andrews, Senator Mallory McMaro, which is on the negotiating team, and have had talks with Governor Whitmer, her administration regarding the status of the current, hopefully, budget that will be passed by October 1st. There's a lot of work going on behind the scenes, a lot of heavy lifting. But my position is a shutdown will hurt all Michiganders. So I'll be going there tomorrow to listen, to learn, and bring back information for our community. But I also am working on both sides of the aisle. Because again, when we have issue with funding in our schools, lunches, and many other initiatives, furlough days, nobody needs. So we'll be working to help in the effort to get a budget passed for all of Michiganders. Project T, September 30th, will be the groundbreaking where we'll be starting 14 duplexes, we'll have 30 in phase one, phase two. There'll be eight homes, Habitat for Humanity. And then in phase three, there'll be 39 duplexes. As we grow from the housing side, we have to continue to grow on the education side. And yes, we do need to do something to help our homeless population, the most vulnerable. So I'm encouraged in that, in that way. We are not adjourned because we are going to a closed session. I'm going to read to make sure that the language is said perfectly for the public to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute under Section 8H of the Open Meetings Act their motion to go to closed session. So move. Motion made by Commissioner Singleton, is your support. Is supported by Commissioner Warren, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Isom?
Yes.
Commissioner Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Seitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Griffin?
Yes.
Mayor Mahaman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The council should go into closed session.